I'd like to call this meeting of your Newark City Council order. Autumn, please call the roll.
Ms. Hall?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Marney? Mr. Raff?
Here.
Mr. Mangus?
Here.
Mr. Blake?
Here.
Mr. Bub?
Here.
Mr. Cost?
Here.
Mrs. Floyd?
Here.
And Mr. Frazier?
Here.
We have nine present this evening. Next, we have the invocation by Mrs. Floyd, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please rise.
You bow your heads, please. Almighty God, we thank you for the beautiful, warm spring weather that we're having right now, and we thank you for the freedoms and the rights that we have as citizens of Newark, and of Ohio, and of the United States. We ask that you be with our military, with our safety forces, with our city workers. Be with us as we deliberate tonight on some important issues for the city, and help us to be able to work together to solve those problems. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda, we have caucus. That's a time for council to discuss anything pertaining to the agenda tonight. Do we have anything? Mrs. Floyd?
Motion to change, Mr. Marney.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Floyd, second by Mr. Raff. Do we have anything else? Under caucus this evening, we will do, I believe, discuss Rule 11 about a piece of legislation during this eleventh tonight. Next, we have the minutes of our April 3, 2017 meetings. There are motion to approve those. Motion by Mr. Raff, second by Mr. Cost. All of them in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of us same sign, that passes. Thank you. Next, under appointments, we have Mayor Hall, the reappointment of Bill Wilson to Norah Keith Wicken County Port Authority Board of Directors. His new four-year term will begin June 1, 2017, expire May 31, 2021. Would you like to say anything, Mayor?
It is Bill Wilson, not Watson, by the way. And he's been, it's a reappointment to him, and you know, he worked for Park National Bank for many, many years, and had a respect of the community, and would appreciate a reappointment, and he's done a great job, so at the same time, I would endorse that.
Thank you, Mayor. Hall, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of us same sign, that passes. Next, we have reports of standing committees. We have one from finance, one from service, one from capital improvements, and one from personnel. Without objection, those will be received and filed. Also, under reports from city officials, we have one from the auditor, Stephen Johnson. The operating report for the period ending March 31, 2017. Without objection, those are also to be received and filed. Next, under communications, we have a public hearing this evening. We're going to open the public hearing now. Autumn, would you read the public hearing?
Notice is hereby given that the Newark City Council shall take action upon ordinance number 17-04 on April 17, 2017. Said ordinance amends Article 6, General Regulations, Article 7, Nonconforming Uses, Buildings and Structures, Lots, and Article 86, Accessory Structures, Article 88, Fences, Walls, and Similar Structures, Article 115, Public and Private Swimming Pools of the Zoning Code of the City of Newark, Ohio.
You've heard the reading of this public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak either for or against? Again, anyone in this public hearing would like to say anything for this or against this? Seeing now, Autumn, we'll close the public hearing, and then let's read it for, well, we, once more, is our second reading, ordinance number 17-04.
Ordinance 17-04 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Marney, Mr. Cost, Mr. Johnson, Mrs. Floyd, and ordinance amending Article 6, General Regulations, Article 7, Nonconforming Uses, Buildings, Structures, Lots, and Article 86, Accessory Structures, Article 88, Fences, Walls, and Similar Structures, Article 115, Public and Private Swimming Pools of the Zoning Code of the City of Newark, Ohio.
Is 17-04 in everybody's packet?
I do not have it.
You don't have it now?
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry you don't have that in your packet. It was discussed committee. Do we have any discussion on 17-04? Mr. Raff?
Mr. President, do we have anybody here to discuss 17-04?
Ah, just us, I believe.
Brian's on vacation.
Brian's on vacation.
Then I'll make a motion to adopt.
Second. Motion by Mr. Raff, second by Mr. Johnson. Do we have any discussion on 17-04?
Mr. President?
Mr. Raff?
I'm kind of compelled to make a wish to pay all those for two weeks till we can get a copy.
Does that motion on the floor? We did have, we did have a copy during committee. We just, I know, we just, I think this was economic development.
No, sir, it was a service.
This is the recommendation letter by Dr. Rhodes, too.
17-04. I do have Mr. Rhodes's recommendation letter. If anyone would like to see that, we can also put that in your packet, too, if they're tabled. Passes. Is there a second to table this motion?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. Motion to table, not debated, so Autumn, please call the roll, the table, 17-04.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marney? Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Mangus?
No.
Mr. Blake?
No.
Mr. Bub?
Yes, we'll table it.
Mr. Cost?
No.
Mrs. Floyd?
No.
And Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
I have that by four, right?
Yeah.
So that is, it's not tabled. So, any other discussion on 17-04? Mr. Cost? Is there, is there any need, I mean, that we have to get this through tonight for any particular reason? Do we need, does the district might be able to?
I don't see Mr. Rhodes.
He just stopped off, take a call. Okay. Mr. Bob, if you say something, and I'm going to get Mr. Rhodes in here.
Maybe we could just delay it for a, I just, with pool season coming up, I didn't, I guess before we voted on, I just wanted to hear from someone.
I'm sorry, yeah. It's my, no, it went to committees a long time ago.
Mr. Rhodes, here's a question about 17-04, the public hearing we had on that went through the planning commission about the fences, et cetera. Nobody has it in their packet, which is my fault. But is there, is there any reason it has to be passed tonight, or would you like to weigh in on that, since I have your letter here? Would you like to refresh yourself with this?
I mean, you can certainly delay it two weeks. What this is, it's just the zoning code. We've been working on it for about the past year, year and a half. It's a working document. Several of us, including Don Ellington, I don't know, what was that, eight, nine years ago?
Probably, yes.
We dove into the zoning code, and we updated it for the first time in, I don't know, 30 years. And we did a whole lot of amendments to it, and our commitment was that we wanted to make the zoning code like a working document. And as we get a list of eight or nine items that need to be changed, what we do is we change those items and bring them to council in a packet rather than one at a time. But this has been through planning commission. It's, actually, this is the third public hearing, because we had two public hearings and planning commission, and there's nothing really controversial in this. This just kind of cleans up some things.
Any question, have a question, Mr. Rhodes?
For nonconforming use. If a property decides to, it's a gas station that's brought out, it's in transition, they're waiting on the liquor license, they don't open up, and it's supposed to be grandfathered in as a residential or how it was formerly zoned, would that impact the business? Would it default to the conforming use that it was supposed to be?
What it is, there's an issue in there of what you call an illegal nonconforming use, all right? And let's use the gas station on, say, 11th Street, the corner of 11th and Granville. Under the current zoning, that would not be an allowable use for that gas station. It's not a gas station now, it hasn't been a gas station for years. So the simple question to you would be, somebody buys that wants to open up a gas station there. What they'd have to do is they'd have to come to the BZI Board of Zoning Appeals, and they would have to ask for variance. That's the one thing this does. And what allows that to happen is, and I'll go back to that gas station on 11th and Granville, because it's a good model. What that does, it protects the neighborhoods. It protects people that have bought into an area, and they wouldn't want a gas station in there, even though they've got one that's been closed for 30 years. So if I wanted to buy that and open up a gas station, you would have to come to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and you'd have to put forth a business case and a business model, and convince them to give you a variance. But there is an avenue there for somebody to get a variance, if it makes sense.
Mr. Raff?
Let me ask that same question in a different way. And this is a hypothetical, because I don't know of any actual real situations right now. But let's say, for example, Little Bear is a grocery store.
It is.
And I come in, and I want to buy that property for the purposes of opening up a grocery store. Let's say, for example, that it's a grocery store now, but the way the zoning reads, it shouldn't be a grocery store. The way this reads is if it's vacant for a day, if it's vacant at all, then it reverts back to what the zoning should be a long time, or what you said the zoning is a long time ago. If I buy that grocery store as a grocery store, and I can't open it up the day of closing, does that mean that I can't have?
No, not at all.
Spirit of time to open up that business?
Not at all. The spirit of this.
You understand my question?
I follow it 100 percent. The spirit of this is truly to do this in a public forum. The spirit of that grocery store, using that as an example, if people didn't like it under the old code, they could have just got a certificate to put a grocery store in. And this, and this update, what they'd have to do is they'd have to come into planning commission and say, hey, Little Bear was a grocery store for 30 years. It closed, now it's zoned residential. And this is all hypothetical. I mean, it's, because it's, because it's not.
It's not.
Then what they would go is go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, just like you would go to the Board of Zoning Appeals if you wanted to add on to your garage, and you're encroached upon a setback. What this does is it further cleans up nonconforming uses to the point where they have to bring in a business plan to make sense, and it further protects our neighborhoods.
So I have the ability to do that as a potential business owner?
That's correct.
I don't have to wait till after I purchase one?
That's right. And what we would hope is that people and realtors, of course, nothing is ever, you know, foolproof, but we'd hope people would do their due diligence before they'd buy a property, and you could go back to that gas station on the corner of 11th and Granville.
If they don't, that's on them, not us.
That's correct. That's correct. But they do have an avenue. They do have an avenue to get a variance, to do the business, but the avenue has to be done in the public light, and has to be passed through the smelt test.
Mr. Cost has one. But the old rule, there was a two-year window.
Yeah, there was, there was a two-year window, and what that would say, and I'll go back to either one of these places, and both hypothetical again, those places could sit dormant for up to two years, and the day prior to two years, somebody could go pull a permit without having to come to the BZA, without having to do anything. What this does is it makes somebody have to come in. Example, if somebody wanted to open up, I don't know, Dairy Queen on Cherry Valley Road, and it didn't fit, but they needed a certain number of seats, because you get down into restaurants, you have to have a certain number of seats. That would be an illegal nonconforming use, but in this legislation, they'd have to come in front of the BZA and show why they need to have X amount of seats. That's all it is. Maybe some people would say it's one more step. If I lived by the gas station on 11th, or as a hypothetical, or if I lived by the grocery store as a hypothetical, I would at least like to have the opportunity, because when you come to the BZA, Autumn sends out a request, you know, if you live a certain distance, about a zoning change, and then people can come and have their input.
Mr. Cost?
For the record, David, there's another section of all this that we've discussed at length, that I'm assuming is going to come to us at a later time.
Yeah, that would be the, that'd be the sign section.
Signs, billboards, temporary signs.
We found in that particular section that it was more controversial.
Okay.
There were a lot more opinions. What we put forth here was what we would call the easy stuff, the low-hanging fruit. The sign, as we got into it, it seemed to be more difficult, it seemed to have more opinions, and with the more opinions, we thought we had to have more discussion on it.
So that'll come to us separately?
That'll come to you separately. And I think when we do the sign, we're going to bring the sign ordinance just by itself, because a few of you remember, there was great debate years passed on billboards, and the distance of billboards, and everything else. So as we do update that one, temporary signs, things of that, we'll probably do that one by itself.
Thank you.
That was definitely not low-hanging fruit.
Mrs. Floyd?
It just seems to me that, this has been here for quite a while, I've heard more questions asked tonight than were asked during the committee meeting. And, well, I have. I mean, you know, I don't think we went into it in as much detail when Brian was standing there. Seems to me, I'm ready to vote. I don't know if that makes sense.
We'd appreciate it if you got it out.
I think at that point in time, we were focused on pools. We certainly asked quite a few questions, but it was on pools, and when honestly, somebody else brought this issue to my attention, and that's why I wanted to get some more questions. The only reason I wanted to have it tabled was because it wasn't in front of everybody, and you don't have an opportunity to look at it. I wanted to give people an opportunity to table it if they wanted to, which they don't, so that's fine.
Mr. Frazier?
Temporary pools, just to level set. That's the last piece that I'm going to ask a question on. Do they still require a fence around the temporary pool? We were kind of looking for additional legislation from the committee that we were hoping on to specifically define temporary pools. What is this legislation, in your interpretation, for temporary pools, and do they require a fence, and what is the restriction in order to protect children?
First, I'm going to claim that we worked on this so long ago that I don't remember the verbiage, and getting back to Carol's point, but Doug, go ahead.
Temporary pools, as Brian described them to us, are exempt from this proceeding. So when you go to Walmart and buy a $99 inflatable pool, the requirements with regard to fencing, et cetera, are not here. In the past, the code was silent on that. The provision was here, was to say, look, there's a difference between a permanent above-ground pool, a temporary above-ground pool. The temporary pools, as they've been defined here, are exempt from those fencing and other zoning requirements.
Thank you, Mr. Sassen. Anyone else before we vote? Thank you, Mr. Rhodes.
Thank you.
Autumn, please call the roll, vote.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marney? Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Mangus?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
And Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
17-04 passes nine, zero. Next on the agenda, we have comments from citizens. There are two places for comments from citizens. One is now, one is after the legislation. I just want to remind you, this is not a debate with council, this is just your opportunity to be heard. Is there anyone who would like to speak during this first section? If you just go up and tell us your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Sue Gray. I live at 100 Penny. I've been there since about '96, and we went through two drug raids on Penny, one right next door, one catty corner, and it was nothing like the traffic that we have now at different houses. One beside of us, one three doors down, one across the alley. There's people in and out constantly. They are working on vehicles, which we have kind of went along with, but it's getting to the point, you can't go along with it anymore. They're dumping oil and transmission fluid down the alley. The fire department was out.
Sunday.
Saturday. And had them put stuff down, fire department gave them two big bags of stuff to put down. They were supposed to clean it up after the fire department left. Well, they cleaned part of it. They raked gravel out of our driveway to cover part of it. We had to put blocks up around our driveway to keep the backyard, to keep them from driving across the property and causing ruts. They park on everybody's property in that back alley, and they block the alley so that you can't get through at times. And they're doing all kinds of stuff. They're cutting up automobiles, and I had a policeman call me at 8 o'clock in the morning a couple weeks ago, and I didn't write his name down, but he assured me everything was on the up and up. He said they are buying these cars off Craigslist for a dollar or a couple dollars. They're cutting them up and taking, selling them. It's a business, a new business in town. Well, I was under the understanding that we lived in a residential area, so they shouldn't be running a business in the back alley and dumping their motors right along the alley. They had a, like a hydraulic hose sticking off of one of them that they had, and you had to swerve to get around it. They've been parked in our alley so that when we drive through it, you have to have two people watching, and the law has told me to call them if we can't get through. But by the time the law can get there, they have moved their vehicles, because they've probably got scanners. The one guy made the statement that you can call the law, I have a policeman's special number, nothing's going to happen. And when the fire department was out the other day, they said, oh, ain't no big deal. We're buddies. So evidently, they're buddies with everybody in town, and we would like to take our neighborhood back and make it a safe place to live. We had, my husband was at the house, had the back door unlocked. We have gates that are locked. Some female climbed over the fence and started to walk right in our house. That should not happen. He asked her, what are you doing? She said, oh, I got to wrong house, I'm supposed to be next door. Then she was going to climb back over the fence to go over there, probably to get her fixed, and he told her, go around the other side, the gates unlocked. One of the other neighbors had a female trying to get in his house. He also had a guy come to his door wanting his truck that had been stolen, and he told him, well, you better go next door. And when he walked off the porch, he seen the guy had a gun behind him. There's one of the guys that carries a large knife. They have no license plates on a lot of the vehicles, front and back. They only have one license plate, which I found out today is illegal, and it's a $100 fine. Now, the law's been out there and checked out, and said they checked the VIN numbers, and everything was legal, the one that called me on a Saturday. But they couldn't see there wasn't two license plates on these vehicles, you know. They come in at hours of the night, they're cutting these vehicles up, disturbing people's sleep, they're dumping their oil and stuff down the alley, they've got tires that they had stacked up, and they took them down behind Penny Mansion and stuck them in the dumpster, but the guy at Penny Mansion brought them back. Today, they was seen stuffing tires in a guy's building where there was some boards knocked off, but they just think they're above everything.
He told me he owned that alley.
Yeah, he told my husband, the one guy, that he owned that alley.
I think we're getting to the gist of this. Director Baum, would you raise your hand? He's the safety director. Maybe if you could have a conversation with him. I know he knows about this, because we've talked about this today, so if you, when you get done, if you kind of go back in the back there, he would like to talk to you.
Okay, there's one other thing. There's a triangle piece on Penny that the state owns. It says there's $500 fine for littering. Well, they're not littering, but they're driving across it, making ruts that have completely destroyed that piece of ground that kids played on. And they speed up and down the street, and they park the wrong direction. Can you think of anything else?
Well, thank you. I'm one of the neighbors, I live on Dewey Avenue.
Name and address, please.
Was Los Neteaux, 89 Dewey Avenue. The traffic is, you wouldn't think how many people going out next door to a building. It's just, we got a camera on, the women's will go in and out of there, it's just mind-boggling sometimes. I don't know how else to describe it. It's, it's interesting in a way, but then you, just when you think it makes a little bit of sense, what they're doing, so far as cutting down cars, then something comes across and it's like, they don't make sense. It's just, it's just weird. So we quite haven't figured out yet what's going on, but drugs is, drugs are definitely one of the issues, so.
All right, thank you. If you want to go back now, or you can wait till after the meeting, whatever you prefer to do. Anyone else for this first section, the citizens' comments? Again, there's one of them. Okay. Let's move on to ordinances on the first reading, 17-14.
Ordinance 17-14 by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Raff, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Frazier, and ordinance amending the position classification, pay range, and department authorization tables of the Department of Safety, Division of Fire by creating a classification of deputy fire chief and setting the compensation therefore, and abolishing one assistant chief position by attrition.
17-14. Mr. Bub?
I'll ask if we waive the two-day reading rule of 17-14.
Motion to waive the two-day rule by Mr. Bub, second by Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Bub?
Yes, this is a request of Human Resources Director Mike Bosker, that we waive this two-day reading rule for the employee policy manual.
Okay. Is there any discussion on 17-14? Autumn, please call the roll, waive the two-day reading rule.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marney? Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Ruleta? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mangus, I have it all. I'm so sorry, Mr. Raff.
You only get to vote once.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
And Mr. Frazier?
Yes. Two-day reading rule's been waived. Mr. Bub?
Possibly adopt ordinance 17-14.
Motion by Mr. Bub, second by Mrs. Floyd. Now, we'll try, is there any discussion on 17-14? Seeing now, Autumn, please call the roll, vote.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marney? Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Mangus?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
And Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
17-14 passes nine, zero. Next, we move on to resolutions on the second reading, 17-20.
Resolution 17-20 by Mrs. Raff, Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Frazier, a resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service to advertise for bids and enter into contracts subject to the appropriation of funds for various construction projects.
You've heard the second reading of 17-20. What did you wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Raff?
Like to make a motion to adopt 17-20.
Second. Motion by Mr. Raff, second by Mr. Cost. Is there any discussion on 17-20? Seeing now, Autumn, please call the roll, vote.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marney?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Mangus?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
And Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
17-20 passes 9-0. Next, we move on to 17-21.
Resolution 17-21 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Frazier. A resolution authorizing and directing the Mayor of the City of Newark to prepare and submit an application to the Ohio Department of Transportation for the 2017 Transportation Alternatives Program to partially fund the downtown enhancements project on State Route 13, 4th Street, from Locust Street to Walnut Street.
You've heard the second reading of 17-21. What did you wish?
Mr. President? Mr. Raff? Make a motion to adopt 17-21.
Motion by Mr. Raff, second by Mr. Cos. Any discussion on 17-21?
Mr. President?
Mr. Raff?
Would you make a motion to adopt, or I'm sorry, to amend 17-21? In the fifth whereas, it says there is a 20% local match requirement. The amendment would have that read as a 5% local match requirement.
Second? Motion by Mr. Raff, second by Mr. Frazier. It's in your packet labeled 17-21A. Is there any discussion about that amendment? Seeing none, hon, please call the roll to vote on the amendment.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Mangus?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
And Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
17-21 has been amended. Is there any discussion on 17-21 as amended before we vote? Mr. President? Mr. Frazier?
I prefer a 5% match over a 2% match.
Thank you. Anyone else? Most everybody here. Honorable, please call the roll of vote.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Mangus?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
And Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
17-21 has amended, passes 9-0. Next, we move on to resolutions on the first reading, 17-22.
Resolution 17-22 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Frazier. A resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service to execute a contract for reimbursement of legal representation of indigent persons for calendar year 2017 with the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners for the City of Newark, County, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
17-22 is on the first reading, but it is an emergency. What did you wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Raff?
Make a motion to adopt 17-22?
Motion by Mr. Raff, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 17-22?
Mr. President?
Mr. Raff?
This is an annual piece of legislation that we do over here, but we have an emergency clause on it in order to make deadlines to pay bills.
Thank you, Mr. Raff. Anyone else? Honorable, please call the roll of vote.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Mangus?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
And Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
17-22 passes 9-0. Next, on the first reading, we have 17-23.
Resolution 17-23 by Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Raff, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Frazier. A resolution authorizing and directing the Mayor of the City of Newark to prepare and submit applications to the Ohio Governor's Office of Criminal Justice Services for fiscal year 2017 and refer to Justice Assistance Program funding.
Excuse me. 17-23 will be held for a second reading. Next, the 17-23.
Resolution 17-24 by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cos, Mr. Raff, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Frazier. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
17-24 will be held for two weeks for a second reading. And finally, we have 17-25.
Resolution 17-25 by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cos, Mr. Raff, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Frazier. A resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service for the City of Newark, Ohio, to enter into purchase agreement with Park National Bank for the lease purchase of four cruisers for the Division of Police.
17-25 will be held for a second reading. That concludes our legislation this evening. Thank you for your attention. Next on the agenda, we have our second opportunity for comments from citizens. Again, this is not a debate with council. This is just an opportunity for you to be heard. Do we have anyone who would like to speak in this second opportunity? Okay. Anyone from administration this evening? Honorable Law Director Sassen?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will pass.
Mayor Hall?
I'll go ahead and pass this evening, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Hall?
Thank you. I will pass.
Ms. Hall? Mr. Johnson?
I just want to say it's nice to have spring here, and we're glad to have it.
I think that'll pass. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Mangus?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would simply like to thank Service Director Rhodes and the Streets Department for getting out and filling quite a few potholes on Granville Road in the past few weeks and some of the side streets, and also for helping rectify a drainage problem on Granville Road and Sharon Valley Road. And I greatly appreciate Director Rhodes' assistance in this project. On that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Mangus. Mr. Raff?
I'd like to call a service committee meeting, and then I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Raff. Mr. Blake?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to make a quick note that on Saturday, our neighborhood cleanup is happening, and we will be accepting tires. So we've worked out an agreement to get a bunch of tires out the neighborhood, out of the alleyways and along the river. So last year, I think we pulled out about 70 or 80 tires. So we're hoping it won't be that much, but considering past patterns, it probably will be. But we're hoping to get that out of there. But we're looking for a good day. Saturday, 8:30, we'll be meeting at St. John's Church, and we'll break up into different community teams to go do our projects and then come back to the church for a luncheon. And so if anyone wants to volunteer, participate more, everyone's more than welcome. And with that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Mr. Bub?
Pass, thank you.
Mr. Bub, Mr. Cos?